I'd like to call to order the City of Bothell Planning Commission. Tonight is Wednesday, January 8th of 2020 at 6:00 PM here at City Hall. It's our first meeting of 2020. Hope everybody had a good vacation. All commissioners are present with the exceptions of Commissioner Pyestrip, who's absent excuse, and I believe that Commissioner Cave will be joining us shortly. This is a time in the meeting where we will take public comments on anything not on the agenda this evening. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to give public comment? I don't have any names. So we will go ahead and move on then to the, I will go ahead and entertain a motion and a second to approve the minutes from December 18th.
I second the motion.
All those in favor of approval of minutes say aye. Motion carries with all four present commissioners with Commissioner Pyestrip absent excuse and Commissioner Cave joining us shortly.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I missed the, who made the motion and second.
I got it.
Oh, you got it. Thank you.
It looks like there's no new business this evening. But I think we do have a comment here from our council liaison and district representative or state representative and council member, Duvor.
Is it on? Okay. I was thinking you'd get that wrong. Nice. Because I'm not deputy mayor anymore. We have a new mayor and a new deputy mayor. So I wanted to make sure you guys knew that. I'm super excited. And I just want to let you know, I'm not sure if we're going to be continuing the liaisons. We had a brief council conversation about it. And we're throwing out ideas about reports and things where the, and meetings so that all of council would know what was going on with each board and commission. Because right now, it's so segregated, we don't really know. And just thinking about different ideas for how to approach that. But I want, I know I won't be your council liaison because I will be gone for the next two months. So I just wanted to thank you all for your service. And I didn't know who from the planning commission was going to continue on. I know there are interviews and certain positions are up. So if you're not re-upping, thank you for your service. And if you are, we look forward to working with you in the future. So thanks.
Thank you, council member and state representative, Duvor. Thank you for coming tonight and coming so many times in the past to kind of keep us up to date on the goings on. With that, we'll go ahead and move into the public hearing on downtown public space. It's a continued hearing. Will be led by senior planner, Dave Boyd. And let it be known that Commissioner Cave has just arrived.
Thank you and good evening. Get to my PowerPoint here. Okay. I do have a brief presentation. And I've included a number of images from the past in case we want to refer to those for, in the discussion. But for tonight's meeting, there are really two issues that I'm, main issues that I'm hoping to get feedback from the commission on. And then I'd also like to at least quickly touch on some of the ones that we discussed at the, what is it, December 4th, public hearing and confirm those because it's a slightly different lineup tonight than was at that meeting. So again, I just want, just a reminder, the basis for these downtown public space requirements from our community vision is to create a sequence of unfolding spaces that inspire people to walk and linger in the center of the city. And to date, we've, some of the things that we've discussed, actually not even on this list, was early on, we talked about a bunch of qualitative issues with the public open spaces, public spaces and reviewed potential code amendments to improve the quality of the spaces, including adding signage and addressing blank walls and connectivity to the sidewalks. The last two public hearings have been focused on some of the more quantitative provisions, the amount of public space required. So there have been suggestions, both from the public and I think also from commissioners, that there may be a need to reduce the amount required per unit. So we've looked at amounts anywhere from now from 60% to 70% of the current requirement. And that started with the September packet. We've looked at, last meeting, we started to discuss a potential change to base the requirement on the floor area as opposed to the number of units. And that's the main focus of my, our analysis since then. And that's the main thing I want feedback from. We've talked about capping the requirement, the required area by percentage of the site area. We've looked at adjusting the provisions for in lieu fee. And I think there was, and exempting smaller infill projects. I think last time around, we did have consent, consensus about exempting the smallest projects. And I think there was general agreement about allowing in lieu fee unlimited for medium size projects and capping the percentage for larger projects. But we'll confirm that. We talked last time, for the first time, about explicitly allowing transfers between sites and treating adjacent sites as one, which are both practices that we've done administratively, but would like to hear the commission's input on making those explicitly allowed. And again, I felt like we had agreement on that last time. And last time, one thing that came up relative to this image on the screen now was requiring amenities like benches in passages. And we had a little bit of discussion on that. Staff feels that since passages are more of a circulation amenity than a gathering space, that adding wayfinding, wayfinding to the sign requirements would be more appropriate for these particular, this particular type of open space. So we would propose to bring back, add that to the signage requirements when we bring the code amendments back to you at the next meeting. So two meetings ago, there was a request for more information, some more numbers on different projects. So I'm not going to go into those in detail, but they're available there on the screen if we want to, if we do want to get into those. So one of the, as we've gotten into this analysis and looked at reductions per unit, what we found is that these townhome units that can provide the open space in passages that also provide better connectivity, pedestrian connectivity through the downtown, they haven't really been having any real issues with meeting the open space requirement. Likewise, nor have office developments. The real crunch has been with apartment buildings in the, in both the downtown neighborhood and downtown transition districts. And while we haven't had many proposals in the corridor districts, the SR 522 corridor and the general downtown corridor, we would expect to have the same, the requirements are the same there. So the same difficulties would likely occur there. This is the project that we've looked at a fair amount, the Ross Road Townhomes project on the north side of 185th between 104th and Ross Road that I've included here. And there are the stats. They've proposed providing a little less than half of what would be required and then paying the rest in lieu fee. We're trying to get away from having to resort to in lieu fees. So we're trying to come up with a requirement that really is achievable on most sites. And then use the in lieu fee for those medium sized projects that were, may not really make, may or may not make sense to provide it on site. And then some flexibility on the larger sites like this one. This one also raised a couple of other questions. They've proposed to transfer, they're also doing a development on, two developments, actually same developer on 98th Avenue. So they've proposed to transfer some of the, their required open space to the office project that hasn't started construction yet and has a surplus of open space per the requirement. And then the, right next to that is this, the apartment project that they're doing that's nearing completion now, that provides its open space along Horse Creek, like has the office space, the office project does. Trying to get my pointer here. So basically along the east frontage adjacent to Horse Creek. So that also raises, raises the question about whether, since this project also was not able to meet the requirement and is proposing to pay in lieu fee, whether that should be, it would be better to treat that in the adjacent office space by the same developer as one project for purposes of this requirement. And just a couple of other projects that really illustrate the point. This is the POP where again, we've, we did allow phase one, phase two to be treated as one project because the over, open spaces overlapped. And these earlier diagrams showing in the bright green in the lower left image, what the requirement would be on that site for the proposed development. And on the images on the right, what they are proposing to provide. So they meet the square footage, but they not in a, in what we would have normally considered sort of typical public open space. And then another, I think, useful example is the addition apartments, which again, was only able to provide actually less than half of their requirement and covered the rest with the fee in lieu payment. So I wanted to spend some time looking at this. This is a revised version of the spreadsheet that I provided, or the table that I provided for the first time last time. We filled in some numbers on this, expanded it a bit, added some projects, and done some further analysis of the idea of a requirement that's based on floor area as opposed to number of units. So I understand there's a lot of numbers, a lot of words on this. So I'm going to just try to focus the attention on three projects here. So first of all, the Ross Road Apartments, that's proposed a little under 7,000 square feet, which again, is less than half of what they would be required under the current requirements. We have previously looked at a reduction from 150 square feet to initially 90 square feet. We even looked at 75 square feet, cutting that in half. At the last meeting, there was some feeling that that might be going too far. So I added a reduction to 100 square feet. That would be two thirds of the current requirement. And those are still, I guess, another thing I wanted to say about the Ross Road Apartments, they're providing the, almost 7,000 square feet. A good chunk of that is a passage around the north side of the building that we don't really feel is ideal and we might not even approve of as, as public open space. So we think that that is another demonstration that the requirement for that kind of project, an apartment project is, is too high and that there is a need to adjust it. So the, if we go to one of these reduced per unit amounts, capping it at 20% of that site area helps and starts getting it close to what they're proposing. A, and I'm highlighting one of two options for, that we've looked at so far for a requirement based on area. And that would take it down below what they've actually proposed. But if you take out that north passage that we don't think is ideal public space, in any case, these I think are reasonable, achievable amounts for that site. And I should mention, I put on the dais, an email I got today from Tyler Churchill, who has, is part of the development team on this project, that also supports shifting to a floor area ratio for this public space. For comparison, looking at a townhouse project, the landing, they are providing a little over 8,800 square feet. The requirement is 8,700 square feet. Any of the per unit, the per unit requirements reductions would really require them to do significantly less than they're actually doing and were able to do under the current requirement. So, and the percent of site area, if at 20%, doesn't, doesn't come close to providing any relief there in that type of project. But a floor area requirement, if we use the same 8% of the net floor area, that gets, and especially if then we allow the 10% in lieu fee, that gets close to what, or the 10% in lieu fee gets them down below what they're actually require, what they're actually providing. So the more that we've analyzed this, the more that we feel that the, basing it on the floor area is, would keep it simple, allow us not to have different requirements for different types of residential projects and comes, would get us to a number that, that works for both types. Just one other example, we don't have any townhome developments to date in the downtown neighborhood district, but I did want to highlight the addition apartments. Again, they're providing less than half of what their requirements are, what they would be required and covering the rest with in lieu fee. Again, we're trying to get away from too much dependence on the in lieu fee and use it more as a tool for, for the small, smaller projects and for some flexibility for developers. The reductions per unit would get down towards what they were able to provide on site, especially if we were to do a percent of site area cap. The 20% doesn't quite get, get them to that. But the percentage of total area with a 10% in lieu fee would get them close, close to that. And I think, close enough that they, they could have modified the design enough to achieve that. So that's, that's the gist of the majority of the analysis that we've done since our last meeting. And there, just a few caveats. There are a lot of different ways to measure floor area in a project, and a lot of different ways that, that it is measured to meet different requirements. So we're still trying, still working on getting these, I think we're getting very close to the right areas. But there's still some work to be done on that before we feel confident in putting this forward as an actual code proposal. So we wanted to get planning commission's input on this approach before going, going forward. And then I have included some of the images that we've seen before to illustrate some of the other issues. This project, which was allowed to transfer part of its public open space to another project by the same developer, again, not, not immediately adjacent, but within the downtown subarea. The smaller infill projects, like I said, there did seem to be consensus on exempting projects requiring less than 1,000 square feet of public space. And there also, at least, I didn't hear any objections to the idea of not having a limit on the use of in lieu fees for these medium sized projects requiring 1,000 to 3,000 square feet, which would be like the project in the upper right that is proposed for the corner of 185th and 103rd. They were able to provide a corner space on that small open space that serves some good function there, but it's only about 740 square feet. Again, less than half of what would be required at the current requirement. So happy to entertain questions or comments and go back to any of these images. And again, the direction that we want, there are five things listed here, but the main one isn't, number one is, I wanted to get your, your feelings about the, your opinions about the change to a floor area basis. And if you prefer the per unit basis, or which, which level is, are you, are you inclined to support? And then I would like to get, since we have one commissioner who wasn't here last time, just a confirmation on the direction that we got last time, that, on the notion of limiting the percentage of site area that needs to be devoted to public space, limiting the use of in lieu fees to medium projects, and allow all projects to provide in lieu fees for part of their requirement for flexibility, waiving the public space requirement for the smaller projects, and allowing transfers and treating adjacent sites as one. And then again, since there is work, still work to be done, we haven't brought you a complete set of code amendments and findings. So we are suggesting that we continue the public hearing to February 5th and make the recommendation at that time.
Great. Thank you, Dave. Before we take public comment, does anybody have any questions or comments for Dave before we get into more discussion? Commissioner Kieran?
I'll make a few comments. And since I wasn't here December 4th, you may have been referring to me. But on, first, a general comment. We're balancing different interests. And we've, in other meetings, talked about density, encouraging density downtown. Yet it seems the current standards are easier to achieve with less density, the townhouses. So I think that is an issue to face and think about. As far as the various questions you have up there, going from the bottom up, I'm very comfortable with transferring within this downtown area. I think we're better served by having larger, more effective spaces than a lot of little pockets that don't, don't have a lot of benefits. And the smaller and medium approaches, I think, are good ones. On the percentage, I'm a little more ambivalent, but I could go with that. And I do think we should look at the floor area. The development environment is changing. I think locking into an older methodology isn't the way we want to go. We want to be more flexible. Another general comment, though, around circulation. We certainly have an interest, to have a walkable community, circulation is important. Some of the spaces we've seen don't really add to circulation. And I point to, you know, you backed away from the interest in having benches and other amenities. But when we look at some of these spaces that are right adjacent to sidewalks, they're really not increasing connectivity, really not increasing capacity that much. So I think for that space, that space would be more likely to be used in that case if there were a bench there. That's my feeling on that.
Yeah. And I wanted to clarify that the, that comment about benches only applied to these passages, which are intended for circulation. We've retained and I think added some language encouraging benches and other amenities in the more gathering space type spaces.
Okay, good. I think, I think that's a very, very good direction to go.
And let me just, let me say, before we do any more deliberating, let's, I maybe misstated, but if we just have any questions, if we need clarifications from Dave, and then we'll, we'll maybe deliberate a little bit more on, but thank you for the comments. We'll touch on those again. So anybody have any questions? Okay. And if not, let's, we'll go ahead and take a public comment on this topic. And it looks like we do have one person signed up, David Mall, I believe. And if you could go ahead and state your name and address for the record, and please hold your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. My name's David Mall with Rutledge Mall Architects, 19940 Ballenger Way, Shoreline. I'm working on the micro project that was mentioned in the packet tonight. And going through the code and trying to figure out how to comply, we kind of don't fit the code very well. We're doing basically two buildings on a 40 by 190 foot lot. So it's basically 40,000 square foot lot. So one building is basically 50 studios. They're small studios, about 420 to 450 square feet. The other building, the more micro building, is 16 to 18, 240 square foot bedrooms, each with a bathroom, off of a common area kitchen dining room, kind of looped around. We call them pods. And, you know, there, there will be, you know, six pods in the building. So, you know, about 100 bedrooms. It's about the same size as the 50 studios. Even at the reduced, you know, 60, you know, two thirds at 100 square feet per unit, that'd be 10,000 square feet of open space on a 40,000 square foot lot. So we just don't fit the code very well. And, you know, I don't know, you know, what the right answer is. I think open space is certainly very important. The eight to 10% of net floor area works pretty good for us. That would be in the 6,000 square foot range and certainly easily achieved. Unfortunately, our project is kind of at the end of the trail. And given the narrow long lot, you know, we've got the 15 foot setbacks, so we've got about 1,500 square feet right next to the sidewalk that we can do some nice things with. But the rest of our open space is going to be, you know, up the middle, in the middle of the project, provided through courtyards with, with our units kind of wrapping around that open space. So, you know, I guess from our perspective, the net floor area percentage is attractive to us. But the other, you know, big, kind of big picture thought I have is that there might be a difference between a mixed use, a project with apartments and ground floor commercial versus a single use apartment project. Not that one should have more or less open space, but in a single use project where it's all apartments and your ground floors, you know, either, you know, office, you know, leasing office or parking or, or units right on the ground floor, public open space is a little less comfortable. But certainly, you know, tenant used open space is just as important. So I don't know, there might be some, you know, differentiation between the two types of projects. Certainly when you have ground floor commercial, you have a lot more public around and, you know, the connectivity through a project to other projects on the next block is very attractive and vital to, you know, energizing a walkable attractive and vital to, you know, energizing a walkable city. But our project is probably more dependent on what ultimately is the definition of a unit, which, again, we don't fit the code very well. But anyway, our two cents, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mall. Any questions further? Thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to provide public comment on this topic? With that, we'll go ahead and move into, I guess, discussion deliberations on what Dave brought before us. And it looks like, I think, probably what you have on the screen, Dave, is going to be pretty helpful to help us kind of walk through these items. So, Dave, you were saying that the first, number one on there is the most important thing you need guidance on with regards to the commission, from the commission?
It's, yeah, it's the item that, kind of the sticky issue that we've actually done the most analysis and thinking on since the last time we met. And so we would like to make sure that the Planning Commission is comfortable with a shift to a floor area based requirement before we actually go further with that and put it into code language for your consideration.
Okay. With that comment, would you be able to provide us another slide, or should we just keep, with regards to this question, to help us with the discussion that might help us more? Or do you think we should just be discussing like what you brought for us?
I think the one that is probably the most relevant is the table, so I can certainly go back to that.
Okay. And then, so, okay, thank you. So, yeah, does anybody want to start off the discussion with regards to this item?
Got a question for you, Dave. You mentioned in passing that there are different ways to calculate net floor area. Are...
Yeah, different ways to calculate floor area. We could base it on gross floor area, can base us on net. We're thinking that net usable area is probably the best. So applying it to townhomes is fairly straightforward. You don't count the garage area, but you count all of the residential living space. In a multifamily or an office project, that raises some questions. Do you count all the circulate space? Do you count common areas or just the unit areas? So that's, that's one point of, you know, fine tuning that we might, that we might have to adjust. But our thinking and most of the examples that I showed or the ones that I highlighted were the ones based on net floor, usable floor area.
So for the pod type development that was referred to, is the common space, so there's a shared kitchen area, my understanding from what was said, would that be part of the net floor area? So there are bedrooms, bathrooms that individuals have, and then there's this common area in the center, would that be counted?
I would, I would tend to count that because it's basically taking the place of the individual kitchens in other units, in the townhomes or other types of units. So it wouldn't make sense to count that since it's essentially, basically essential to the space functioning.
I like the idea, if we can define it clearly enough, that it's usable, easily usable.
Yeah.
If I could jump in just a little bit, I think what we're trying to, what we're trying to figure out from a technical standpoint is what's more the livable space, what's the living, not the livable, but the living space, you know, as opposed to the leasing office or the elevator lobby, or, say boiler room, I don't know if anybody has a boiler room anymore, but, you know, the, all the HVAC rooms and electric rooms and those kinds of things. So I think our focus is more on what's the livable, the living space that we're trying to calculate.
Do commissioners have any comments on? Commissioner Hampton?
Yeah, so a couple of questions, Dave. We'd talked before about the in lieu fees, and you'd mentioned that we'd never spent any of the in lieu fees, and we didn't really have a mechanism to spend that. Have we resolved that issue, or is that...
Well, we haven't yet spent them. We have begun discussions on the types of things that we can spend them on, and we've collected some, but we're not, so I think that's one of the issues that we'll be dealing with once we get these code requirements sorted out, is further developing the process and the policies under which we'll spend those monies.
Okay, thank you.
There's no shortage of ideas of how to use those monies. So I'm not concerned about that. And it's kind of outside the purview of what we're looking for from the Planning Commission in terms of the code amendments that we're bringing to you.
Okay, that's fair, but it's hard to answer question three and four without knowing how effective those monies would be in creating open public spaces, rather than just requiring the developer to do it on their own?
Well, and I think that's why we're looking at it a little differently than how it was originally set up. So the original intent of those was to be able to take those monies, as I understand it, to take those monies and actually purchase and develop that space in lieu of it being provided on that site. What we have identified is that, for one thing, we're not, we're not sure how much money we're going to collect through this process. We would rather they build those facilities or that space rather than just pay money and be done with it. So we're setting it up so it gives us more flexibility to use those monies, maybe to enhance existing spaces, maybe it adds on to something that they're providing, and we can, we've got some public property next to that that we can, we can add on to that, or we can take a space that's already existing, add benches, add fountains, add a play area, those types of things. So we have much more flexibility then with how we would use those monies. So I think the direction we're going in that, I think, is actually better than how it was, how it currently exists, which is we collect the money, we need to use it for public space just in that, in that downtown area. We would still limit it geographically to the downtown area, but the types of things we could do with it would be much broader.
So who would decide how that money was spent?
We've talked about an interdepartmental team, and we've started working together with parks, public works, and community development to review options for that, proposals for that.
Okay. It just seems like we get, I'm just thinking about this, we get one shot at this, and if we don't use our opportunities to create more public space, we may have some money in the bank and we can use it for enhancing these, but we're not going to get more. So it's just something to consider.
We haven't taken adding public open space off the table, but there are some limitations on how we can, we can't use it on existing projects that have already been identified in the capital facilities plan as park expansions, like the Park at Bothell Landing or Skriek Plaza. So we recognize some limitations, and we're trying to figure out what's the best way. Going back to that vision statement of creating this network of vital spaces for the community to gather in downtown.
And if I understood your last question, your last statement, what we're also doing is limiting the ability to use this fee in lieu rather than provide the space. We would rather that the space be provided as part of the development. So this is also then limiting more what those options are for actually just paying a fee in lieu. Right now, it's at the city's discretion, but frankly, it's my decision, but I don't have a lot of guidance in terms of whether to accept that or not accept that. So we want to build in a little bit more predictability, which is something we've heard from the development community in terms of, you know, whether they can use that fee or not use that fee in lieu. So we think this does that. It provides a nice balance between providing some certainty, as well as making sure that we get some additional public space in the downtown area.
Okay, thanks. And then two more, two more questions. The second one should be quick. I can't remember if we talked about this, do we require a certain amount of a private open space in apartments?
Yes, and that has not been an issue, really. The one change that we are making is explicitly allowing roof terraces that would be commonly used by the tenants of a building to count towards that.
We're not proposing any changes related to that.
Well, yeah, just making, one, one small change to make it clear that it can be that kind of a common roof terrace or roof space. We have been allowing that, but the code doesn't explicitly allow that. So it could be balconies, it could be front yards on townhomes, it could be a terrace off of a unit, but...
Now I remember that conversation, yeah. Okay, thanks. So with that, do we have a, like, a square footage requirement, or is it a per unit requirement?
It's 60 square feet per unit.
Okay. So we're using a per unit for that, and we're proposing potentially to do a total site area for the...
Not a total site area, but, yeah, project area.
Net floor, okay. Okay, and then my last comment, and it's similar to what he said, but maybe opposite. It appears that if we switch from the per unit to the net floor area, we're going to require significantly more open space for townhomes, whereas apartments decrease, is that right?
What I'm trying to get to is a formula that will keep townhomes close to where they are now, and will provide a reasonable reduction for apartment...
So Dawson Square is a townhome, right?
Yes.
So it's currently a 67, 50 square foot requirement, and with 15% site area, it would be 13,895. So that's about double?
Yeah, no, but, so we're not really looking at the 15% site area. The requirement that we're looking at is like, potentially 8% of the floor area, usable floor area, which would be around 7,500 square feet.
Okay, maybe my, maybe my page didn't print all of the columns. Okay.
It's a legal sized page, so I can, I can pull up the...
Okay, no, that's, that's good clarification.
It's probably a good one.
Okay, maybe I'll walk over there and grab one. There it is. Okay, that makes more sense. I just thought that that was, seemed kind of backwards, that the units that have more yard space and more open space would require more public space for people who wouldn't need it as much. Thank you. That's my third question, and I'm done. Thank you.
Very excellent questions, thank you. I see Commissioner Kieran with his question. Oh, okay, sorry.
While we have this up, you know, we initially were looking at a 67% reduction, kind of from our current requirements. At 8%, some of them, we're looking at a, sorry, not a reduction of 66%, reduction of 33%. Some of them now, like the Ross Road Apartments, it would be a 66% reduction. Not saying that it's right or wrong, it's just pretty significant compared to, I guess, the first pass that we had through this process. I had one question with regards to transfers. There would be no differentiation between a transitional and a neighborhood downtown transfer, is that correct? So a development in the neighborhood downtown could transfer its open space to a downtown neighborhood district, is that an issue?
It could. So we haven't proposed any restrictions to date, and the, one project that did transfer to a remote site was a transfer from downtown neighborhood to a site that was split zone between downtown core and downtown neighborhood. So some of the open space landed in the downtown core, some landed in the downtown neighborhood.
Okay. And I think, just based on this table, like, the downtown transition area, if large developments are budding established neighborhoods, I mean, part of the benefit of the open space requirement is to reduce the massing, and I think provide some more, you know, break from the new development that's going in. My concern would be transferring those requirements in, you know, a development that's going against, or right next to an established neighborhood, to another development downtown where maybe you don't have those neighbor concerns that you would have in a transitional district. Is there any way that we could, we, we're not set up to have, like, the director's review on anything that we're talking about today, but is there any safeguard, or do you think it's not really merited?
Well, these all get reviewed by the planner that is associated, and we try to, to work with the applicants to get the best solution possible. With regard to the Ross Road project, they're meeting their requirement by using, and with regard to the interface with the adjacent single family, they're, they're meeting that requirement by taking what would normally be a required landscape buffer and opening that up to the public as a passage along the north side of the project. So I'm not sure that actually helps. It basically turns what would, might otherwise be private yards or private open spaces for the apartment complex into a public passage. So I'm not sure that helps with that transition. The code also has requirements for maximum building length and modulation of the building that, that also do, are intended to achieve that purpose.
Thanks. And I think in general, you had some notes about micro apartments, it does help solve, I mean, we have a lot of competing interests, one being affordable housing, and if it's, you know, not feasible to build micro apartments based on how much open space you have to offset, you know, that, this is a move in the right direction if we look at net floor area. So I think it's a good step.
Commissioner Kurt?
Thanks for bringing this new information to light. I appreciate the presentation and the extended Excel chart here. I stand by my previous comments about most of the questions on your list. In response to the first one, I do prefer it to be tied to floor area ratio. I think that's a much more equitable approach to determining open space requirements. It appears that the 10% total, it's a lot more close to kind of what has been provided. The 8% is, is more substantial of a reduction. I don't know, really, in terms of comparing those two this early on without seeing exactly the definitions of what exactly is going to be included in the floor area. I think that's going to be, like Commissioner Kieran said, an important designation and description in the code language. I think if it's laid out pretty clearly, it should be a good simplification of, of the code requirements. So I think that's, that's good, and I support moving forward with the FAR approach. Thank you.
And the FAR, and difference between the floor area ratio and the net floor area?
Well, basically, it's a floor area based approach, and the fine tuning will be how we define the floor area that it's based on.
Okay. So I can think about them somewhat synonymously right now?
We're talking about a net floor area that's different than a floor area ratio. I think the term, we're conflating the terms, and they're, they're, serve two different purposes. So for our purposes tonight, we're talking about net floor area, which, again, is the living space.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I was going to make a similar point. Technically, it is a floor area ratio, but the other, the other meaning for FAR is so well established that we should probably steer clear of that.
Apologies for that terminology.
Apologies for, yeah, that terminology.
So, let's see, why, so, um, I guess we probably haven't given you the guidance we need on this, we need to kind of come to some consensus, uh, with, or, or have you been able to get that with the questions that we've asked you tonight?
I think I've, I've got it, uh, from all the commissioners except, uh, except the chair.
Um, I'll have to admit, I am, um, uh, yeah, I, I guess I like what the commission has proposed up here, um, I guess when it comes down to it, um, this may be just kind of a general comment that I wouldn't want the, Commissioner Hampton had a great question that I, I had forgotten I wanted to ask, and that was about the in-lu fees, and I think that's, that is a very interesting one, and to know, so we have, for the in-lu fees, it's a little bit different, sorry, I just want to talk about why I remembered it, but, um, it has to be spent in the same area where we're collecting the fees, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um, thanks for bringing that up there earlier, because it kind of all, it kind of ties into the discussion we're having, so...
When we say area, we're talking about the downtown area, basically the, the zones where we, for the downtown, downtown core, the downtown, transition and downtown neighborhood zone.
So yeah, that's, okay, yeah. Um, I don't know, as long as, uh, as I, I'm just, I'm, just as long as the city's not giving away too much when it regards to these reductions, um, but it, it doesn't seem like we are, I guess. Um, anyway, I, I guess I don't have any further comments on this at this time, I'll just kind of defer to the...
Well, Mr. Chair, I think you just hit the crux of it. For us, is, and what we're looking for guidance from the commission on, and we've had several discussions around this, is to make sure that what we're proposing and what we're considering at this point is not going too far, that it's creating that balance between what we're trying to achieve, uh, and what is, what is more workable for, for the developers that are putting these projects into our downtown subarea. So that's why we're struggling with this, and I think why some of the, you know, the commission is struggling with this as well, is I, I don't know that there's any right answer, and I think it's more than just about the square footage, it's also about the quality, it's about how those are used in the, in the, uh, on the site. So what we're trying to hit here is more of that specific, and we can delve in next, next time, and as we go forward, we can delve more into some of the quality issues that, that Dave talked about at the...
Okay, great.
Yeah, and, and like I said, we, we did deal with those, uh, early on. I, I think we, uh, uh, came to some, some good, uh, recommendations, uh, or at least, uh, um, uh, proposals. Uh, so next time, we would bring you the whole package with the qualitative improvements, as well as these, uh, quantitative, uh, changes.
Okay, great. Commissioner Hampton.
Thanks. One, one last question. On the Dawson Square and the Landing, they're each, they each provided more than what was required based on this hundred-and-fifty-square-foot-a-unit, and with both proposals to ten percent and eight percent, they would be required to provide more, and with the ten percent level, it would be more than what they provided. And your memory, if your memory serves you right, do you think that that would have been a problem for them with their development plan, or do you think that that would have been absorbed pretty easily?
Um, I think that it would have, um, required some redesign, maybe, um, possibly even, uh, losing a unit. Um, on the other hand, it might have, uh, been an opportunity to, uh, instead of just providing the passages, create, uh, a more gathering space, uh, area, uh, at, at the, uh, sidewalk entrance to those. So, um, uh, I think those are generally viewed as, as, uh, fairly successful, um, applications of the, the public open space. Uh, so we're trying to come up with a number that's pretty close to what we have now, uh, or what, what they provided and what was, what's currently required.
Thanks. All right, great. Uh, Dave, can you, uh, bring that slide up again with the, the questions that you need?
Yeah.
Guidance on tonight, three, okay. So, uh, limits and percentage, I don't know. Okay, so we need to answer, uh, number, let's see, I guess two, now I guess we can move on to number two, percentage of site area, or did we just, um, give you enough information on that?
I think, uh, we've got, uh, what we need, and with the floor area, um, based, uh, measurement, uh, the, uh, cap, uh, based on the side area may not even be, uh, needed, um, uh, based on the analysis. So, uh, we may keep it in there just as a, a safeguard in case for some oddball project that we haven't, uh, conceived of yet, but, uh...
Okay.
Uh, again, there, it was more of a confirmation, I think, we had proposed, or had, uh, done analysis of both fifteen and twenty percent, and last time around, it felt like there was consensus that twenty percent was, uh, if we were, we're going to have a cap, that would be the more appropriate.
Commissioner Hampton.
I, I don't know if I made it clear, but I, I support the, the net floor area, but I wanted to, I wanted to pick on this in-lu fee one more time, because I think that you're proposing that all, based on this, all projects to provide in-lu fees for part of the requirement, you're proposing ten percent. So, is that correct?
Yeah.
So what I just heard you say is, at Dawson Square, or the Landing, if we had a little bit more of a requirement, we might get better open spaces, and so now we're talking about potentially taking ten percent of that away, which in my mind would conversely lead to less good open spaces.
Yeah.
So I would be, I would be against that for larger projects, for, for that reason.
So, and, and that's a good clarification, and, and, um, let me change my, so if we had had that, uh, slightly larger requirement, uh, for those projects, they would have then, and, and included, uh, uh, the ability to, you, to pay in-lu fee for up to ten percent, then they would have had the option of, of adjusting their design to include a little bit more, add to those, uh, passages, or to, to pay the, the in-lu fee. That's where the, the flexibility comes from.
Okay.
In general, we're trying to come up with a, a solution that, that reduces the need to use the in-lu fee, um, so...
Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, there's no, there's no limit on what percentage they could pay a fee for, is that correct?
That's correct.
They could pay a hundred percent of their requirement in fee, and we're, we're trying to get away from that, even that being an option. We want to be very clear about what the expectations are and what the options are. Our thought is the ten percent, having that in there, and that being at the developer's option, then gives them the flexibility in terms of design. You're absolutely right, though, Commissioner Hampton, that, that could result in a reduction in, in some of the space that might be better. So we can look at, um, we can look at providing that as discretionary at the city's discretion, uh, but we're kind of back to where we started then with that less predictability upfront, uh, for, for the city as well as for the, for the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so we'll move on then to number three, uh, for medium projects. Um, is the, uh, how do commissioners feel about, uh, number three on here?
Just to recap on that one, I think what we're, what we're proposing there for consideration is the, basically, three and four go together. So if their requirement would be for a thousand square, for less than a thousand square feet of this public space, we would just waive the requirement. If it is between a thousand and three thousand square feet, then they could either provide that, or that's where we would allow them to pay a fee in lieu for the entire amount up to the three thousand if they wanted to.
Commissioner Cabe.
Um, I'm just, I'm generally in favor of that stepped approach, based on different project type. I think it's a good, good way to proceed. Um, I don't know that a thousand feet buys us much, and it's kind of a big onus on the developer, so I like it.
Including the, the full fee in lieu use?
And so on the small infill projects, um, those seem very interesting, um, would, would there be a, is there a chance that, uh, that a developer could do a bunch of separate projects that essentially were the same project? Would, turned out it was kind of a bigger project, and to kind of get around it? Um, I guess there'd be setbacks, and I, I don't know, I'm just kind of throwing it out there, I don't, maybe that...
No applicants ever attempt that. I'm being facetious. We get, we get Platts all the time that try to do that.
So I just, I'm trying to figure out how to avoid something like that happening.
There is code language saying that, uh, developers can't, uh, use those, that to , uh, avoid, uh, code requirements, so I think we're, I think we're pretty, um, we would be able to, uh, prevent that from happening, but we'll take a closer look at that.
Okay, great. Any other commissioners with comments with regards to infill projects, man? Are you, you like what the, okay, Commissioner Kirk?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that I stand by what I previously stated, and I approve of that.
Same here.
Okay. Okay, great. Um, and then we'll move on then to number five, I think, so three and four, it sounds like you have enough information from us. Transfer and treating adjacent sites as one. Any, uh, comments on that? Commissioner Hampton.
I'm fine with that. Looks good.
I'm seeing nodding.
I think, I do too, with the, with the caveat, sorry, to, um, but the, to Commissioner Cabe's point, um, there's potential that, you know, one, one project may, uh, may abut an, an established neighborhood that's a different zoning, and, uh, that's one case where I would not necessarily be in favor of this, being able to, the one that's abutting the, you know, the neighborhood, be able to transfer that, um, to a more dense area, so, but I wouldn't know how to write that in our, our code language.
Okay, well, we can, we can give that some thought and see if there's a, a, a good, good way to address that.
And I think we have some, some, um, ability already, because these, this is at the discretion of the city.
Okay.
So we don't have to grant a transfer if we don't think that it's appropriate. It's really another tool that's available if we think it makes sense. Um, and as far as the adjacency to neighborhoods, I think that's a very good point. We have other things in the code as well that address that in terms of additional setback and stepbacks for height and those kinds of things, so, but if we see where it might make a difference, and it would be helpful to have that, um, then I think, I think we currently have the ability to, to say, we don't think this is the right place to do a transfer, but, but we will take a closer look at that, make sure that we've got that in there.
All right, thanks, Michael. All right, with that, um, uh, want to turn a motion then to continue the public hearing to February fifth?
I'd move to continue to February fifth.
Second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously with Commissioner Pi Strip absent and excused.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. Okay, and with that, we'll go ahead and move into the first study session of the evening, and just so I get this right, we will be joined by Tracy Prokowsky with Parks Planning and Grants Program, uh, with the Parks and Rec Department.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening, Tracy.
Just a second while I pull up my presentation. Good evening, and foremost, thank you very much for, um, allowing my absence at your last meeting. I had a fever and no voice by the time meeting time came around, so...
I think there's actually more commissioners here tonight, so it actually worked out well for us.
So the, the flu is definitely making its way around the city, and I think I volunteered for a pretty tough case. Um, but, uh, I'm here tonight to give you a brief introduction for the work that we've done thus far on our Parks, Recreation and Open Space Plan. Um, and you may have heard this referred to in the past as the PROSAP, the Parks, Recreation and Open Space Action Plan. Um, we're just giving a little more of an updated name. Um, and if you've worked on this in the past, this is a document that we update actually every, uh, six years. Um, we're doing it a little different this year. It's my understanding in the past that staff and, uh, the Parks and Recreation Board and the Planning Commission worked concurrently to update both the plan and the comprehensive plan, Parks and Recreation element at the same time. This year, we are going to, uh, we've worked through our PROSAP, and then I will spend the next year working with Community Development Department as well as with you, um, to actually put together the, uh, the change to the element, I presume as long as that's passed in the docket, which is later on the agenda, so hopefully that's right. So, as we work through tonight, I'm going to give you, um, just a quick overview of the PROSAP process. I'm going to give you a, a brief explanation of some of our existing program and asset review, talk through our extensive community engagement that we did, talk through some of our project, um, planning, um, some of the key projects that are going to be included in the final plan, um, talk about our revised plan goals, which is one of the largest changes to the plan this year, uh, and then be able to address any initial questions that you might have. So first off, what is a PROSAP plan? And so this is a six-year guide, which is a strategic plan for managing and enhancing all of our parks, trails, and open space, as well as recreational opportunities and special events for the city of Bothell. It acts as a really key tool, both for our department, um, for the city council, um, and also for yourselves and for the community. It acts really as our key apology and policy and strategy guide for Parks and Recreation here in the city. Um, it's a key tool for capital planning, and so, um, one of the things we're working to do in our department, we've just been around, around four years now, is to be able to create a pathway for capital projects, to be able to work through extensive community engagement, be able to do some good project planning, get those projects included here in the PROSAP, and then those are basically the feeder process for the actual capital facilities plan, that budgeting document that occurs every two years for projects that are over, um, uh, fifty thousand dollars. It's also a technical study, so there's been a lot of work that's gone into this thus far, um, and I hope that it serves to be a good communications tool for those of you who may have taken a look at the draft that was published last month for the Parks and Rec Board. Um, it is a little bit more accessible for public reading and review than some of our past plans have been in terms of charts and graphics, and some photographs to really illustrate what we're talking about and the work that we're doing for our community. Um, the goal of our plan is to be strategic and focused, and to really key in and, and answer the following questions. What are the strengths of Parks and Recreation here in Bothell? How should we focus in and serve our local community? Where should we focus our efforts? Um, and also to really create a plan that's responsive to the community and council goals. And one of those key council goals there was to be fiscally responsible, right? Is to make sure that the plan that we put together really reflected some of the fiscal constraints that the city is facing, and to be honest with the community about that. For some of our previous plans, we've had a lot of aspirational projects, um, a lot of really aspirational master plans, and then everyone gets frustrated, myself included, right, that we can't move forward with those. And so that was really a key theme of the work that myself and our consultant team have been doing over the past year. So thankfully, I'm, I'm almost to the end, and then excited about embarking on the new process for the Comp Plan Amendment. So what we've done over the past year, um, is completed a comprehensive park, trail and program assessment. We've taken a long, hard look at what our existing conditions are. We've done extensive community engagement, worked through a needs assessment, done capital project planning and some initial budgeting, talked about some of what our implementation and funding strategies are, and now we're in our final stages of plan review and approval. Um, in December, and it would have been a couple days before I was originally scheduled to meet with you, um, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board did approve our draft plan in essentially the same form, there's some edits and some other stuff that has to be done, um, and it actually goes to council for final, um, what I hope is final approval, um, February fourth. It's due to RCO, which is the Recreation and Conservation Office for the State of Washington, um, by March first, and they, like, they are required, we are required to provide it to RCO, so they were eligible for grants, and so that's really important. Um, one of the grants that we received last year to replace the pedestrian bridge at the Park, uh, Park at Bothell Landing, that's an RCO grant, and so if we don't get this plan in, we'd no longer be eligible for grants such as that, just a million dollars. So first, I'm going to walk you through here, um, an overview of some of our parks and amenities, and then give you a little bit deeper dive into our community events and our recreation program. And one of the main reasons for this is, as I began this process of community engagement, I would go out and talk to some different groups, and how many people know that we have this amenity, or how many parks do we have? And I was actually kind of surprised at how few hands went up in the room, so there was a great learning lesson there about some of the hard work that we have to do about communications and marketing when it comes to Parks and Rec amenities. But we do have four hundred and three acres of Parks and Open Space. Um, of those, a hundred and forty-one acres... Of those, 141 acres are urban forests. Five acres are cemeteries. Most people don't know we do have two cemeteries here in town. 28 acres are sports fields. About 230 acres are passive use only, right? So those are low intensive places, not a lot of permanent structures. And 168 acres are active use. One of the things that's important to remember about that 168 acres is they're not open and free for development of amenities. They already have playgrounds on them and restrooms and parking lots and lots of other amenities. And so we do have a lot of developed space. And then the staff in Parks and Rec, which you may not know, also maintains our regional trails. And I don't mean the King County Regional Trails, I mean like the North Creek Trail. And so the Public Works Department builds them and then they're moved over to the Parks Department for maintenance. This is really just a smattering of some of our amenities. And so we have 11 parks that have barbecues and picnic tables. 15 of our parks have walking, biking or mountain biking trails. We have four rentable picnic shelters. I know you're going to think I'm strange, but we have 31 restroom stalls and eight restrooms. And I mention that is because each stall takes an awful lot of work and maintenance. We have three artificial turf fields and six grass fields. They serve a multitude of sports. They are multi-use. Also have some open grassy play areas. Five of our parks have historical features. We do have a concessionaire who does kayak and stand-up paddleboard rentals as well as limited bicycle rentals, a disc golf course, an outdoor amphitheater, and then two small rental facilities that can be used for private events. So we have the Lidle House, which has a maximum capacity of about 70, and the North Creek Schoolhouse, which is around 20 or 25. Ever so briefly, some of our recreational trends that I want to talk to you about is foremost, some of these trends are challenging. We had to do a data conversion, we had to change softwares, and we unfortunately lost some of our historical data. You should also know that we use a contract model for all of our recreation opportunities. So the various classes and camps that the city holds, those aren't city staff that are putting those on. We actually have outside contractors who come in and provide those services for us. I can't stress enough how popular adult softball leagues are. We have 90 teams annually. And if we could find a way to massage those fields and be able to get more teams on the fields, I think we'd have plenty more signups. Two of the contracted programs, Skyhawks and Kids Love Soccer, are just by far, by leaps and bounds, our most popular recreation offerings. And you can see the numbers there, 1,000 kids in 2018. We had about the same in 2019. It's really very impressive. Overall, though, when you think about our classes, whether those are like paint and sip classes, adult enrichment classes or or adult exercise classes or even kids after school. In 2018, 16% of those classes were canceled due to low registration. And in the first half of 2019, almost 24% were canceled due to low registration. I don't have the numbers up here for the rest of 2019, but they trended similarly to calendar year 2018. So that either tells us that they're probably not the right classes or we need to market better, or there are definitely some lessons that we're working on learning there. So for our contract model, in 2018, that was split 75% to the instructor, 25% to the city. And now we've changed it to be 70% to the instructor and 30% to the city. Our class size is really ranged, but when you think back, I mentioned to you that we had two rental facilities, right? Lidle House and the Schoolhouse. Those are the two most common places where we actually hold our recreation offerings. We do do some limited rentals from the North Shore School District. But that's one of the reasons why that class size is so small and ranging from 1 to 24, because we actually don't have large facilities here. Registration can be a drop-in, like an exercise class. I show up once, they pay a one-time fee, or I can register for the full thing. For adults, average class size is about nine. Would also like to point out that classes are also offered by YMCA and other private businesses. When you think about who we're competing against, that's who we're competing against. But you'll see on the other side of the screen there, some of our softball statistics, 91 teams in 2018 and 87 teams in 2019. And it really is the absolute highlight of spring and summer for folks. For kids, we use that same contract model. We had 324 enrichment registrants in calendar year 2018. Those are like painting classes or clay classes or parent and me, something like that. Those are non-sports related classes. And then a little over 1,000 sports registrants. Art classes, drawing classes are the least popular. And the parent and me classes had just about 12. And then non-sport summer camps averaged about 13 kids. When you look at that chart, though, I mean, again, spring and summer are overall recreation registration spike. Those are kids going to camps, most notably Skyhawks and Kids Love Soccer. Our community events is really, I think, where our department shines on the recreation side. People here in Bothell love that sense of community, that sense of placemaking, that the annual events that we do bring. And so our Fourth of July Parade, between 5,000 and 8,000 folks, that includes people who are participating in the parade as well as those who are sitting on the sidelines and watching and cheering and getting candy thrown at them. Music in the park, both the adult music in the park and then the Just Kidding Around concerts. You'll see that those numbers really vary widely, right? 300 to 1,000 or 175 to 700. Those events can be a little challenging in terms of consistent numbers. Most of the music in the park, though, is in the 700, 600 to 700 every week. That's because you're, it's based on who the band is and how many people like that and the weather. For the Just Kidding Around concerts, that 700,000, if any of you are into kid music, Casper Baby Pants. He always brings out an absolute huge crowd. But the Blythe Park Campout sells out usually within a day or so, save Halloween, very popular. And while Arbor Day and Veterans Day are smaller events, they are still very much loved in this community. So as we thought about plan development, we thought about what's happened over the last six years. Most notably, the creation of the Parks and Recreation Department as a separate department as compared to a division from Public Works Department. We really wanted to engage the community and engage the community in a deeper way than had been done previously. And so for past plans, you know, there was an open house or two, and whoever could come after work would come in. And we really wanted to do a meet people where they are kind of approach. And so spent just about six months reaching out in every way possible to try and reach out and touch the community in the most possible way. So I did a number of board and council sessions, and so that's our Parks and Recreation Board and Council Study Sessions. We did a community survey, which I'm going to talk about in just a moment, as well as a dog park survey and a teen survey. But if you look at those numbers, that's well over 2,500 responses, which is really incredible. And particularly for the community survey, something I'm very proud of getting 1,200 responses from a community of our size. While that sounds small, it's actually quite large and we had a very high level of participation. Did some extra work and reached out to teens, which was really exciting and I'll talk about in a little bit. We did three individual stakeholder sessions. So we invited different groups of individuals and community groups. So one was more of our environmental groups. Another one was our sports groups and then also some of our special event community. And so those those individuals sat down with our consultants so they could have complete, they wouldn't feel awkward talking to myself as a staff member and could really share what their hopes and dreams were for the community, what some of their frustrations are with the department. And so those were some really good sessions for for us. We did 18 community meetings and pop-ups. Some of you may have seen me at concerts in the park or some of the parks across the summer looking all hot and sweaty. And then we also did a community workshop where we had over 30 attendees and then lots of online engagement as well. Because we were really looking for a thorough, thoughtful and transparent approach. And it was really important to hear from the community. So what did they say? So first, I want to talk about the community survey. It came out in two forms. It was the same paper survey. We sent out a random sample mailed form to residents here in Bothell and the urban growth area. And they could either respond back by mail or via an online link. Those responses were kept separated from then a general online survey, which we were out promoting as part of the pop-ups and as part of our community engagement. And the goal there was to basically see, was there any big discrepancy between the two? The mailed survey basically acts as your, you know, your, oh, I just blanked on the word, but your your control group. Well, thank you. Statistically, Mel, thank you, Director Katterman. And so we were really pleased to see that when we looked at the results of both of those surveys, they aligned. And so we knew that there wasn't any like ballot stuffing on the general online survey or anything like that. So as I work through these results for you, I'm going to be talking about them as an entire group where we combined up both the results of the mail survey and the results of the online survey. And what we think is really important is that over 97% of our community feel that parks and recreation are either essential or important to our community. And I think anybody who's been in a park can can appreciate that and the energy that people bring. The top reasons that our community gives for visiting our parks are trails, relaxation and fitness. And only a very small group didn't go to any parks in the last year. One of the questions we asked is something that I like to refer to as sort of our Goldilocks question. And it hits both parks, programs and facilities. And if you look at that chart, what we're asking for, are we providing more than enough, about the right number, not enough, or sort of don't know? And just under half of the survey respondents respondents think that Bothell does not have enough walking and biking trails. And that was something that the community really valued. One of the things you'll see, pardon me, as I move through the survey is the teens also were very interested in walking and biking trails. And I thought that that was sort of an interesting correlation. Again, thinking about my statement earlier about being fiscally responsible in the creation of this plan, we were also trying to understand what was most important to people. And then as I move into some of our next questions, when we rank those ideas by how much they cost, do people's opinions on those change? And so developing new amenities in parks was the single highest priority. And when you look at the top three, expanding the trail network and then acquiring land for future parks rounded out the top three. We did separate out the concept between a park meaning an active space or someplace with a sports field as compared to acquiring land for just general open space. Thinking about lower cost improvements, right, and you can see what we offered, walking and mountain biking trails, some all-inclusive play equipment, off-leash dog opportunities, community gardens, picnic shelters and gathering spaces. The strongest support was for trails, all-inclusive playgrounds and picnic shelters. But people were allowed to choose one or all of these and 70% or better supported all of the options listed. One thing that I want to say just quickly about sort of off-leash dog is we put up our pop-up in terms of timing about three quarters of the way through the community survey. So the community survey was open just a few weeks while the pop-up was going on, which is why there's a separate dog park survey. I could see the detailed data on the on the on the survey results. I can't see who submitted what. But for example, I could see the date and timestamps. And I can tell you that the interest and the support for off-leash dog opportunities was alive and well and really important to the community long before the excitement of the pop-up dog park. And so sure, there's a little bit of crossover there in the last couple of weeks of the survey where all the excitement was going on with the dog park, but that's going to rise up a little bit. But it was already on the minds of our community even before we did the first pop-up at the Park at Bothell Landing. So that goes through the results of the community survey and what's on the mind of largely our adults in the community. I don't have the demographic information up here. One of the things that I thought was interesting was over 50% of the people who responded to our survey didn't have children at home. But they weren't necessarily seniors, so they were within that prime childbearing age of, you know, 25 to 40. When you look at our community demographics, though, generally speaking, those folks have kids. So it was an interesting sort of blip in the data. I spent some time really working hard to reach out to teens and youth in the community, right? They're the ones who are coming up next and really trying to learn what's on their mind. And so I had the opportunity to send out, working with a student, send out a text survey to students who went to the North Shore School District, largely Bothell High School, as well as we did an onsite event at Inglemore High School. And so what I learned is that the vast majority of teens like to hang out with friends. They like to go to movies and they like to play sports here. But you'll see that a couple of others there go to the beach and hiking also ranked very, very high. On these, one of the things that I found fascinating, right? So when I look at survey results, one of the things that I like to look at is how many people actually answered the question and how many sort of skip over them? Because if you skip over that question, you're generally not interested unless I'm asking you a question about money. And when it comes to amenities, teens would love a hangout space like the Hangar. And by far, that was their biggest request. But when it came to the other amenities, they actually weren't that popular. What they wanted more than that was events. So movies in the park, food truck nights, teen concerts, quite frankly, all of those ranked really high. And I just thought that that was an interesting takeaway. Some of the other things they're looking for are road biking trails, basketball courts and covered courts, adult-sized playgrounds, meaning swings that are sized for adults and not for, you know, for children. They too love their dogs. They believe in their community. They're interested in ways where they can volunteer and beautify their parks. And then they are teens, so they do want drive-in movies, ski buses, they want us to monitor creepy men at the library. They were extraordinarily excited about the prospect of doing like teen bands or Battle of the Bands or having teen-related music for Music in the Park. And I thought that that was pretty cool. There were a couple of other things that I chose not to put here, but use your imagination, teenagers are teenagers. Moving into the dog park survey, 91% of our respondents said it was definitely needed. Again, when you look at this survey information for dog park, though, know that for the most part, the people who are responding are individuals who have dogs, right? So this is like the one survey that we do that is sort of skewed in a specific direction. I do think, though, that people here really do want a permanent dog park location. One of the things that I loved is we are looking, you know, to our community for help, right? That volunteerism in a way to be fiscally responsible. And so out of the 1,400 responses, nearly 300 people provided their email who said, yep, I'd like to learn more about volunteering to help find a permanent location or do other things that are related to the dog park. And I think that that really speaks volumes about who we are as a city. I love this slide. This is just my wonky planner self. Because how often does this actually happen? But studies show that where people want a dog park is within a quarter mile walk of their home. And so I was trying to figure out where would people most like it, pretty much everywhere. And so this is actually one of the reasons why we're moving forward with various pop-ups and trying out different locations, because pretty much everyone wants them, I'm guessing, right near their home. We asked how often people would use a dog park and what their current exercise method. Most people do daily or multiple walks around the neighborhood. 4% were honest and said they go illegally off-leash in parks. I'm convinced from my own personal experience that that number is much higher. Most people had no concerns for a dog park, but those that did, excessive dog waste and the lack of animal vaccinations and/or illness ranked out the top two. So after we finished all these survey instruments and the community engagement and doing the community workshop, we began to move into taking a look at the plan goals, right? So what do we really want to accomplish over the next six years? And even moving forward into the next six to 10 years. And so as we began that process, we took a quick look back and thought about what are the core themes that came out of our work with the Parks Board, with city council, with the community engagement, with the various surveys and with the workshop? And this is really what we heard and how we worked on changing our goals for the plan. One of the primary core themes, take care of what we have. If you recall from earlier in the presentation, we have 403 acres of parks and a good number of amenities. Some of those amenities, though, are getting a little tired, some deferred maintenance. And so our residents would like us to upgrade and improve our existing parks. Providing wayfinding and interpretive signage systems was also something that we heard a lot about, especially in the free form section of the survey. Taking a look at our Americans with Disability Acts compliance and really taking a focus on barrier removal to make sure that we're inclusive to everybody who lives in our community and focus in our minor repairs and renovations. On the Parks and Programming for All, the core themes that we heard is that they really want us to connect and expand our existing trail system. And also to connect and expand that into the King County Regional System, Dog Park. And really to focus on new park amenities as compared to land acquisition, find ways to create inclusive parks and events, particularly inclusive playgrounds, to really focus on placemaking, right? So what are we doing for community events, concerts, gathering? How do outside organizations like the city's special event permit process factor into that? And again, that idea of experiences over things or places, that really came through for our teens as well. They're looking for those special events for, and specifically for their age group, concerts for teens, the food truck nights, movies in the park. You know, they don't want to go see movies that four-year-olds want to see. They want to see teen movies. So in our old PROSAP plan, it was broken down into goals, objectives, actions, policies. There were pretty close to 100 of them, not something that's really achievable in a six-year period. And so we worked to take all the information that was gathered over the course of the year, And so we worked to take all the information that was gathered over the course of the year. Look at the previous plan that was written, look at our comprehensive plan. Look at our other documents that are out there, our city budget, the shoreline management plan and use those to create our goals. And this is what we came up with. To provide an inclusive diversified system of parks, trails and open spaces that deliver a variety of active and passive recreational opportunities that maintains a high quality of life for our residents and reflects the community's changing needs. To develop a network of shared use trails and bicycle pedestrian corridors to enable connectivity between parks, neighborhoods, commercial areas and other destinations. To facilitate and promote a range of recreational and special event opportunities for the community. To maintain and operate a modern, efficient park system that provides a high level of user comfort, safety and aesthetic quality and protects capital investments. To pursue and maintain effective partnerships and provide volunteer opportunities to support our parks and recreation system. And then to provide leadership and fiscal responsibility in the management of our system. And that leads us actually into, I'm just going to go through this very quickly, part of our discussion on capital planning. Cause I think it's important for you to know what kinds of projects are on the minds of the community as well as the minds of the city council. And so when we think back to that core theme, how do we take care of what we have? I just want to show this to you. This is our current asset replacement list, right? So this is a budgetary document that we have that talks about our, our amenities, when they were last replaced, what their estimated life is and what year we should replace them. And that year we should replace them is really a guide, right? Some things wear out a little sooner, some last a little longer. You'll notice there are no dollar amounts associated with these. But this adds up conservatively, this entire list totals $5 million if we had to replace them in one foul shot. So it's pretty expensive. So we took a look at our current amenities with a real eye towards safety and maintenance, right? And that links back to that fiscal goal. And so put together a shortlist and this is some of the first key projects that we feel like we need to work on through 2025. And again, this is just that preliminary list. There's no funding for any of this. This isn't budgeted. This actually will come into play and be used as the initial document as we begin talking about our capital facilities plan process. But through 2025, we estimate just under $3 million worth of safety and maintenance repairs that need to be done. In the near term, so within that six year period, if we want to take a look at other projects that the community focused on and asked for, and we also took a look at as part of that comprehensive needs assessment. These are some of the projects and there's a little more on the next page. You'll notice that that's listed as an estimated cost. You'll also notice that, for example, the last line on this table is an all inclusive playground and its estimated cost is zero. Really doesn't cost $0. It means that without having talked to the community and truly understood what kind of amenities they're looking for in inclusive playground, I don't have a good sense of what that estimated cost is. So right now I'm just keying that as zero. You could do a simple inclusive playground for $50,000, assuming we had existing land to put it on. Or if we wanted to do a full on 100% very large inclusive playground, that could be a half million dollars. That's why it's keyed as zero. And so this here rounds out our list. So again, potential projects, nearly three and a half million dollars. So a lot of potential opportunities here, but also a lot of cost. Moving forward into projects beyond 2026. And in case you're wondering why 2026, that's because that's how long our current CFP. We, we budget for the first two years, plan for the next four, brings us to 2026. So I'm looking sort of beyond that planning period. And here we start to get into land acquisition yet again, right? It's taking a look particularly in the northern part of our city. We also looked at other areas where housing density was increasing. So what was the walkability to parks? And where there are greater numbers of people to actually think about putting in parkland. So here are some potential opportunities. And again, you, you see lots of zeros on there and really just some ballparked estimated costs on land. Land though, as you all know, is not getting any cheaper, so those are probably a little low. Here's the second page of some of those potential projects, but you'll see even with lots of zeros, this list already totals $17 million. And so these are going to be continued conversations with the council and with the community as we move forward into this 2026 and beyond to really figure out what the city of Bothell can afford. And then we have our future projects. Over $47 million of large potential projects. These here, when you see alternative funding source needed, I really mean a levy or a bond or something like that. Grants can certainly help in some respects here, but we're really talking some sort of large outside source of revenue to get these done and a large commitment from the community. So what are our next steps? So as I mentioned earlier, the draft plan was approved by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board in December. It is scheduled for council adoption on February 4th. And I really hope that you will add it to your docket for 2020 so that we can all work together to make an update to the comprehensive plan. We did not, one of the things I want to mention, I don't have a slide for this before I get into questions, is we did not change any of our level of service calculations in our current plan. There's one question that I have pending to our consultant to see whether or not we should adjust one of our level of service calculations and it is for community parks. I mean, that is because it could impact our ability to collect park impact fees, right? And those are the fees that someone pays, you know, when they are expanding a property or buying a new property to help create new amenities for that new capacity. And so, but I'll have an answer on that shortly, but I don't have an answer on that for you now. But as it stands right now, we haven't made any changes to our level of service. One change that we did make in the plan that may be of interest to you is we do classify our parks, right? There are regional parks, community parks, neighborhood parks. We eliminated the regional park category because it didn't fit our community. We really don't have regional parks here. And so we changed, the one park we had in there was Centennial Park, of which most of that park is passive use only and wetlands. And so that was section was moved into open space. And then that front area of the park where there's parking and the schoolhouse and the picnic shelter, that was moved into a community park because it's largely the surrounding neighborhood that used it. So it simplifies things up a little bit. And we felt just gave a more transparent view to the public about what our parkland really looked like and how it's being used. So I've given you a lot of information. I'm delighted because I've managed not to cough during the entire thing, but I'm now here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Tracy. Commissioner, any questions from the commission, comments?
A couple of thoughts. First one, perhaps seemingly contradictory. I think it's important that the plan be achievable, but as I read initially, I was a little concerned about losing an aspirational aspect of it. So I'm glad you're, that kind of came in at the end that, you know, you need a clear achievable plan ahead of us, but also identify what could. So I saw that come in later, I was pleased to see that. Also connectivity, it's interesting, we talk about that downtown, also talk about it in parks. And when we talk about biking and, and I'll say walking, not hiking, some of it's parks, but you get to the parks between on other ways, other streets. So I think it's important that you continue, that, that you work with public works. I'll say continue, I'm sure you do. But, but there are some gaps. I mean, I have a walk, I go between two parks and I gotta go back and forth across the street without crossings at some point with my dog on leash. But the connectivity is important to be brought through a couple of different things. So again, glad to see identifying it and just hope you look at it broadly beyond just parks to see how all the things link together.
That's great. And that's, I'm very glad that you brought that up. And one of the things that we do as staff is that we have a regular capital projects meeting. And so all of the staff that's working on the capital projects and all the different departments, we get together regularly and we talk about our different projects that we're working on. How, if there's any overlap in area, right? Because we don't want to dig up streets twice. But we're also trying to find ways to make those connections that you just talked about, right? If we realize that, you know, after a parks project is done and a public works project is done, there's that tiny little sidewalk that's left behind. We want to try and address that in the moment. And so that's something that we're working hard on is improving that interdepartmental communication to avoid problems like that.
Good to hear, thank you.
Mr. Cape?
Thanks for the presentation. I'm never a fan of taxes, but I'm always amazed at how little the parks tax us each year. And you talked about funding earlier. What's the likelihood of a bond or levy actually passing? I was on the Parks Board maybe eight years ago, nine years ago, and we struggled then with funding. Do you have any other mechanisms or anywhere regionally that people are trying, are able to get grants or some opportunities?
So the city continues to, you know, to apply for grants that it's eligible for, right? In, in, in various areas, right? RCO, the Recreation and Conservation Office, you know, being the most common. King County also puts out, you know, a number of grants. And the former Wayne Golf Course, nearly $8 million of the total cost was actually funded with grants. And so that is something that, you know, we keep our eyes on and we apply for as much as possible. When it comes to the, you know, the possibility there of a, of a bond or a levy, too soon for me to be able to say, we haven't scoped out what kinds of projects might be potentially included, haven't talked about that with, with city council. That's just something that's potentially on the, you know, I don't want to say potentially, that is an option for the future based upon council direction.
Okay. How much of the Bothell Landing project is funded through any transportation grants or money? Or is that all, is the $14 million that you showed on the slide, is that all funds needed for that project to move forward?
It is, that's all funds needed to move forward. It doesn't include the pedestrian bridge because that's underway right now. And so the 14 million that's left, the original master plan was, was quite aspirational. And so, you know, that includes the fountain and the new restroom and the cafe and all of that.
Okay. Great. And then last question, you mentioned, you know, the old Pro Sap had 100 different individual line items for specific requests. I think it was probably a good idea to thin that down to sort of match what people want today. Is there a risk of losing some of that historical knowledge and historical desire by the city? Or do you think you kind of accurately captured it in this revised update?
I think that we accurately captured that in the revised update. The old plan doesn't go away, it still is available to the public. One of the struggles that we found in talking with the community, some of the confusion arose from by having all those projects that weren't vetted in any way listed in that document. People assumed that they would be moving forward, right? That there were projects that were going to happen and they would get frustrated when they actually wouldn't. And so that was another reason why we chose to remove them from, from this document so that the community could know the direction that we're headed with the caveat that, you know, this is a plan, right? This is a six year planning document. And so at any point in time, the city council and the, or the capital facilities plan committee or city staff could request something to go into the CFP, right? So I think a great example there is the former Wayne Golf Course. That wasn't listed, that wasn't included in our CFP. That opportunity arose and we were still able to move forward with it. So there still is, pardon me, there still is some flexibility there if a unique opportunity comes up.
Thank you. I'm sorry, one last question. I think I said my last one was my last question, but skate parks been on the list for a long time and was kind of a hot issue. Like I said, eight or nine years ago, is there any progress being made as finding, finding a home for one or not yet?
So that was a, a big discussion point actually within the community and among the council. And we did move it and I cannot remember off the top of my head where we moved it to. I think it's here in long-term projects. And so we know that it's something that's important. When we looked at that teen survey, it didn't actually rank very high. And as a result of that, we've moved it forward as part of the, you know, into the more of the potential projects farther out in the, in the future. There are skateboard parks in Woodinville and I think in Kenmore as well. And so while there certainly are some transportation issues there, there are some that are relatively close and within the North Shore School District area. You're welcome.
Commissioner Kirk?
Thanks so much for the presentation. Every time I hear more information about the pros plan, it's always exciting. I have a couple of questions and they're all, I have more than a couple of questions, they're kind of disjointed. So forgive me for that, but piggybacking off of Commissioner Cabe's question about master planning. Are there sort of prioritization of incremental changes within master plans? I wasn't, I'm not familiar with the master plan for the Park at Bothell Landing, but are there certain parts of the master plan that are higher priority? That would be more like long, is there a division between long-term projects versus things that like facilities that could be improved more quickly?
It's a challenging question to answer, but I'm going to do my best. Those projects that would largely rise to the top within a master plan, at least as they exist right now, would be those that might have a, a safety component. In the current CFP process, knock on wood, I hope to construct Madrazo Park either this year or next year. And so, you know, that master plan has been sitting on the shelf for a while. And so to be able to move that forward, that was a direction that was given to me as part of the CFP plan. But like, when we think about sort of that phased approach, right? In the Park at Bothell Landing, the pedestrian bridge was beyond its useful life. And we were looking at potentially having to shut down that bridge and lose that connection from the Smamish River Trail into downtown. And so as a result, that particular element sort of rose up. You know, likewise, if it's part of the CFP, a grant opportunity might, you know, come up to phase a specific section, then that would also rise it up a little bit.
Okay, cool. Thank you. One of the things that you mentioned of a spout bathrooms and restrooms, and I think that that's a really important service that the city provides. Not only because we, if we're looking to make trails and we're looking to extend our connections, people are going to be going longer distances and it's always good to take care of the people that are using a lot of the trail. And, and that's just from an equity perspective too, making sure that people have access to that is really important. So I applaud the Parks Department for that. And I think that it's a really important thing that should be kept on there. So that was more of a comment, but I appreciate that and it's, that's a great service that parks provides. My last two questions are about kind of permitting and the financial side of things, especially in programming. I have seen, especially this summer and spring, there've been some, what I, I guess are private citizen groups that have organized events at public parks. I'm thinking of like a cornhole in the parks. And they've had lots of people out there. Is that a, a permit that people apply for or?
So I can't speak about specific events without both more information and it's also not my program area. So I would need assistance from my coworkers to help adequately respond to that question. It's a, it's a tough balance there. We do have rules within our parks about if your event is over a certain number of people, then you do need a special event permit. Our special event and volunteer coordinator is actually in the process right now of, of working through that process and making some changes to it. So one of the things that may come out of that is maybe what that number looks like or whether or not permits are required for that. But you know, but if you happen to have a large family and there are 25 of you and you're coming out to play flag football or cornhole, that's one of the reasons why parks exist is to come on out and, and do that. But generally though, for private sector or larger events, we do require permit, advance permission, something like that. That may or may not include a fee.
I see. I'm just thinking about extending the use of parks for wider segments of the population, like looking at maybe facilitating, facilitating teen programming. Where I'm not sure what the, my second question is about, asking how the contracting program kind of works too, and that might be outside of the bounds of this study. But are there easier ways to sort of facilitate additional teen programming without having to, you know, devote a lot of city resources to it? Cause I'm like this, schools programs here have a lot of extracurricular activities that could utilize park space and that could kind of serve some of the community that doesn't have a lot of current programming that's offered by the Parks Department.
So this information is still very new to us, right? And so will this likely be adopted again, hopefully by council, February 4th, if not before March 1st. And then as part of our internal department processes, those are some of the things that we're beginning to look at now. And we'll actually be looking at over the next six years as a part of this plan is what does that programming look like? How are we making sure we're taking a look at that equity and inclusion? So we're really just at the beginning of stages of that. So stay tuned and keep participating at workshops.
Great, thank you, thanks so much.
You have a couple of comments and questions. Thanks Tracy for that great presentation. Before I forget, uh, I guess the biggest, one of the most exciting thing that came out in the survey you said were the two things referring to volunteers, especially from teens. Hope the city really kind of reaches out to those teens who said they wanted to, um, volunteer to get involved with park, park beautification and other things. That's just, that's neat stuff. I went to a festival this past year, I don't know, I think it was like Eastern and Southeastern Asian Festival that was kind of at, where one of the pop-up dog parks was, so that's this past year, maybe I'm thinking two years ago, but.
I think it was two thousand eighteen.
Oh, that was, okay. So that would have been just a, a, a group that came to the city and said, want to run it out. Hopefully they choose to do it again, cause that was super fun. I saw that there was a part on there about, uh, uh, community gardening. And, um, I know we have a, there's a, I don't know if the city's ever reached out to the county, but there's a large property on West or next to West Hill, I guess it's officially called the Magnolia Farm. Are you familiar with it?
It's privately owned.
It is?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought it was in the King Con, I thought it was under like King County Conservation District, but I guess.
It's, I could be wrong, but my understanding of that property is that, so there is a conservation easement on it, which stripped development rights on it. But it's a privately owned piece of property.
Okay, bummer. I mean, great, but, uh, kind of the pee-patch questions, uh, the window. Let's see, and with regards to some of the classes, um, is it, that, that some of the classes that the city puts on that had to be canceled due to, uh, interest? Those classes, are those developed by the city or do companies come to the city and say, hey, I want to do this?
Uh, it's primarily the latter, where we're approached by outside organizations.
Great, well, thank you very much for your presentation.
You're welcome, I look forward to being back.
All right, great. Thank you again, Tracy. Uh, with that, we'll move into the, uh, second study session in the evening. And will be led by the Community Development Director, Michael Cotterman. And this is about the twenty-twenty planning docket. Oh, and if anybody needs to maybe, we have five of this, so if you need to, by any chance, step out for a second to use facilities? You can do it, but just maybe, uh.
You want to take a break?
Do you guys want to take a, okay, well, just take like a three-minute break? So come back around seven fifty-eight? And we are back, so we will go ahead and proceed with the study session, the twenty-twenty planning docket with, uh, Michael Cotterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So tonight I'm coming back to you with a, an updated version and a draft of the planning docket for twenty-twenty. This will be going to city council for their approval, uh, at the February fourth meeting. And we're not looking for any formal action from the planning commission this evening. Uh, you don't have a formal role in this, but you do have an important role in terms of providing feedback to the council, some input to them in terms of what should be in the docket as well as the priorities. So, um, I don't have as, uh, exciting and interesting a presentation as Tracy. I can only blame myself for putting myself after her presentation on the agenda. But I appreciate you, uh, bearing with me through this. It is important, it's just not very exciting. So a couple of things that I wanted to point out to you in, uh, in your packet, you had an attachment one, which is a summary of where we are in the twenty-nineteen docket items as far as the status. I think I went over that last time that I presented to you, so I'm not really going to spend any time on that unless you have questions. Uh, you also have an attachment two, which is the draft docket, which will be the focus of my presentation this evening. And I've put on, at your desk, uh, a revised version of that. We're continuing to look at this and update it. One of the things I noted tonight, I was talking with Tracy earlier, I had left off the, uh, including the pros plan in the comp plan. The changes that they're going to do to the policies and things that we'll need to incorporate into the comprehensive plan. So that's in addition. So the, the handout that you have, that I gave you this evening, I've highlighted those things that have changed from what's in your packet. And my apologies, I, I, I hate to do last-minute changes like that. And there's a few of them in here, so I will walk through those, uh, very briefly. Uh, you'll also notice on the very last page of that particular handout, I've added the estimated hours by each of the categories. So that's on the very back of the, the one that I gave you this evening. So, and I'll talk a little bit about that and just how far, uh, we think we can get and what the assumptions are in terms of the hours, total hours in some of these categories. So, um, I guess I should look at my PowerPoint presentation and follow that. So in terms of what we're looking for this evening is really discussion, uh, and direction from the, the commission. Any additions, deletions, changes, uh, and then some, uh, input on priorities. So just for the benefit of anyone who hasn't been through this process before, uh, the potential plan and code amendments are what we include in the docket. This is something that's provided for under our municipal code, also under the Growth Management Act. So this is really just keeping track of all the changes that, that come up during the year. Some of them are privately initiated, some are initiated by staff or identified by staff, uh, or by the commission or by, um, the council. The council is the one that actually initiates any of these, uh, items. So we put together a list of what could be included. So we, the way that this is organized in the table that you have before you is we identify the source, uh, and then in some cases, the status. So you'll note, a lot of these have been initiated in previous years. And they may be underway, um, or they may not have been started yet. We also highlight those that are brand new, uh, to this, uh, to this particular docket. Then we have the, uh, the priority on the left-hand column. Also, the, the tasks are sorted by the ones that are mandatory. Those are things that we do not control. That's usually a state mandate that may be related to the Growth Management Act or some other state legislation that was passed. And we have a few of those, uh, that I'll go over tonight. Then we have council goals, uh, specifically, these are presumed to be very high priorities for the council. So we put those up higher in the list of priorities. Uh, we have subtasks under those, some of which would be done this year, some of which would be deferred, uh, or our, our suggestion is to defer those. And then we have everything else on the list that we've heard, again, from all the different sources that I mentioned. Also included then are the proposed timing for this. That would be the staff's recommendation for when we would be able to do these, given our, our resources and our capacity, as well as our estimate of how many hours we think that will take. And the hour estimate is really what we use to determine how much of this we think we can get done in the next year, based on the, the staffing and the resources that we have. So those are the council goals. I've highlighted the ones that these relate to in one form or fashion. I'm not going to spend time on that unless you would like me to. Uh, then this is the table that's at the end of the, the handout that I gave you this evening. So you can see, when we look at the mandatory items, um, we have six hundred and eighty hours devoted to that. We're, we're, our assumption is that we will have about twenty-one hundred staff hours this year to spend on these, excuse me. That's based on, um, basically all of Mr. Boyd's time and a portion of Mr. Blackburn's time, because he will be retiring, uh, during the year. One of the items that I'll be talking to the council about is whether or not we can fill his position prior to his departure. This number here assumes that we would fill that position after he leaves. So that's assuming there's going to be a gap of time in there. Obviously we'll try to minimize that gap as much as possible, but even if we filled it right away, there's going to be a time, uh, there's a, um, time for the person to get up to speed and there's some transition involved and, and that type of thing. So, um, that's why this assumes fewer than two FTEs for this year. This does not include my time, uh, even though some of my time goes into a lot of these things. This is really focused on the two people that are dedicated to this, uh, this specific work. Also does not include, um, other outside times. We're going to have an intern, uh, for part of this year. That's, that's basically a bonus. We're not sure exactly, you know, how those hours would factor into it. So, again, just focusing on the, the resources that we are, that we have dedicated to this. So you can see, when we take the mandatory and the council goals, um, if we had all of the council goals that we were addressing, that'd be over thirteen hundred hours out of the, the pool that's available. We're suggesting some of those be deferred, some of the subtasks be deferred, and we focus on some more immediate, uh, benefits. A lot of that frankly is Canyon Park. Uh, what, what I'm proposing to the council is, and what we need to do is really dedicate ninety percent of Bruce Blackburn's time to Canyon Park. To get that done between now and, uh, end of June as much as we can. Our funding runs out at the end of June, so we really need to get that done. Uh, and then we also need to get it wrapped up to the extent that we can before he leaves, uh, so that we're not trying to get someone else up to speed to, to finish that out. Although the actual adoption of that will not be able to happen until later in the year because that's an amendment to the comprehensive plan. It gets all very complicated. I'm not going to bore you with all the details, but suffice it to say, we really need him to focus on that, um, for the next seven months. And then we have all the optional items and we do include some of those in our recommended time. Uh, we want to pick up as many of those as we can. Some of them are related to a few of the other things that we're talking about, um, but, uh, but not all of them. Uh, most of them are, are related to some new items as well. So you can see total hours there is about twenty-two hundred. We have estimating about twenty-one hundred available, so we're a little over that. These are our best estimates. As you can see from last year's, we didn't get everything done that we had hoped to get done, uh, for various reasons. Sometimes because we just didn't have the time or the capacity, some things took longer than planned. Other things were delayed because we were waiting on someone else for the information and that was not forthcoming. So there are different reasons why things are delayed, but we try to get through as much as we can. So what I would like to do is just kind of highlight for you the changes from last time, because I did include the suggestions from the planning commission, uh, that I heard from you last time to make sure I've captured those correctly, as well as the changes that I've made, um, from what was in your packet. And then highlight the items that, that staff at this point, and again, this may change before we take this to the city council. Uh, we're still working through some of this. What those twenty-twenty items would be. So if there are any, any questions at this point before I dive into the, the gory details?
No, go ahead and dive in.
Okay. Uh, so the first, uh, six items here are all mandatory items in one way or another. Uh, these are all state mandated items, most of them related to the Growth Management Act. So the critical areas update is one that was actually initiated a couple of years ago. We got through most of that, there are some other things that came up as a result. Part of it was we didn't have the direction from FEMA that was required, so that's supposed to be forthcoming very soon, so we can finish up that. And then the council had some additional questions when we took the previous update to them, that we're doing some additional work on. Uh, the, the growth management, the comprehensive plan amendments, you can see the transportation element, the one that we had started last year. We've deferred that to this year, because we couldn't get that completed in time. Likewise, I've added item D, that's the pros plan, uh, which we would need to incorporate into the comp plan as well. Uh, any of the policy changes and other maybe CFP changes that come out of that. Uh, so that is an addition that, uh, I had overlooked previously. Item B, uh, is also new and that's because we have, we've found an inconsistency in how we approach annual amendments to the comprehensive plan versus what we're allowed to do under state law. So we want to make those consistent. We're not, we're not out of compliance, but state law actually gives us more flexibility and we'd like to be able to do that. So just, just to be clear about that, but it's important for a lot of other reasons that I won't go into. Likewise, the Canyon Park Plan adoption, and then we have several private amendment requests that I think I had mentioned last time, that we actually have a little bit later on in the list. The next item is buildable lands report, and I think we've talked a little bit about this. So we have the two counties that we're working with, King County and Snohomish County. The reporting that's required, that has to be done by June of twenty-one. King County's on an accelerated schedule, they want to get all of that done by the end of this year. Snohomish County is following a little bit behind that, um, but that's going to take some staff time to, to work with them and provide the data and review the reports and, uh, get all that done. That is used to help us when we get to the target setting, which King County is also doing this year. Snohomish County is going to start that this year. As they're also doing their countywide planning policy updates as a, as a part of that, both of the counties are. So all of those tie together for purposes of our comprehensive plan. And what we're going to do in our next, uh, um, update, major update of the comprehensive plan, which is currently due in June of two thousand twenty-three. There's currently legislation being proposed that would move that to twenty-five. We don't know if that'll happen, we still have to plan for twenty-three. Uh, the last item there, number six, is something that came out of the legislation this last session, House Bill nineteen twenty-three, that, uh, provided some, that provided the grant funding that we're using for a couple of other items, but it also had one requirement in there that we look at our parking requirements for certain types of, of housing that is within, I believe it's a quarter mile, uh, is that right, Dave? A quarter mile of frequent transit. So, uh, Dave has done some initial analysis, we do have, I thought it might not apply until we had our bus rapid transit in place, but we do have some places that already qualify, so we feel we need to move forward with that. So any questions on any of the mandatory items? We're recommending, uh, with the exception of E, under number two, which are the private amendments, we're recommending all of those for, uh, two thousand twenty and some will carry into twenty-one, obviously. So any questions about those?
I have a brief question. Does the buildable lands report, um, interfere with Bruce's time, Mr. Blackburn's time working on Canyon Park in the first half of the year? Or?
Yes, that is another assignment that he has, that's the other ten percent of his time. We're trying to share that with some other staff as well, so it's not all on him.
Okay, cool, thanks.
So then the next two items, seven and eight, I'm sorry, were there any other? I was just diving right in, sorry. So the next two items, seven and eight, have to do with council goals. Number seven, obviously Canyon Park, that's a, uh, still a huge lift. We have a terrific consultant team on board with that, they're working very hard, working very fast to get all of this done. But it's still a huge lift for staff and one of the ways that we were able to get everything done with the, the funds that we have is to have Bruce dedicated to doing some of the actual work, particularly on the, the development regulation side of that, which will come as, as part of this. So. So I think that's pretty straightforward, and you're all very familiar with that. The Housing Strategy Implementation, we have several items under this. The one that we are suggesting deferral on is item B, which has to do with the Accessory Dwelling Unit Code Amendment. We've done several of those already. Dave Boyd has processed a few of those through the Planning Commission and the City Council. There is more to do, certainly, and we want to do those. There was some work being done by Arch last year that was temporarily suspended. We're hoping that will pick up again this year, and that will help to inform additional amendments we need to do. That is also something we're going to have our intern working on, or the fees related to accessory dwelling units and researching what other places are doing to help reduce those fees. So there may be some things that come through that, but this will be a lower priority for us for this year. Item C is the multifamily tax exemption. This has already been through the commission in terms of your role in this. It's going to the city council next Tuesday for their initial discussion of this and to give us some direction so that we can come up with a draft proposal on that program. And again, Dave Boyd's working on that with Arch. The next two, one, excuse me. Item D was introduced by the Planning Commission at the last meeting where we talked about this in December. That was a suggestion from the commission. So I want to bring that to your attention, make sure that I've captured that correctly in terms of what you're looking for. At this point, anything that we're not doing this year, we're just recommending a deferral to '21. That doesn't mean necessarily we do it in '21. It just means it would be considered again for priority in '21. The exception to that is later on when we have the private comp plan amendments that we're deferring to the major update. So if there are no particular concerns about that one, I'll move on from it.
Well, question on the micro apartments. We just heard earlier that there is a project being proposed. Is there much interest in the development community on that? Is delaying this going to impact that, or is it just that one outlier project?
So far, it's just the one project that we've heard about. There have been others, I think, that have had some initial inquiries. They've actually had a pre-application on that particular project. So this is one that, we're recommending that this be a privately initiated code amendment. I don't think at this point, we don't anticipate there are any comp plan amendments that go with it. And I think this works generally with their schedule. If it's just the code amendments and they want to initiate that this year, the question for council will be, if the applicant is willing to make us a private application and they would pay the cost of the staff doing that work, we may have to shift some things, but we could bump that up in terms of priorities.
Okay, so it's not a, I'll say, deal breaker at this point, it's just...
Not as far as I know.
Okay, thank you.
I have a brief comment too on item number seven, Canyon Park Sub area and Regional Growth Center Plan Update. Is there any, are there any new developments in the SEPA delays to the existing?
The appeal? Yes. So we are in conversation, we're in discussion with the Canyon Park Business Owners Association about the appeal. They had proposed, they characterized it as a letter of intent. It was really a much more detailed agreement, in my opinion. So we counter-proposed on that to try to get us to a point where we could address the issues that they're concerned about and withdraw the appeal and move forward. So they've responded to that, and we're still in discussion. So I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to work something out and then be able to move forward. We have submitted the appeal to the hearing examiner, and he has put a stay on that pending our ability to work this out. We're giving ourselves a deadline, essentially, if we can get something done by the end of this month at the latest. If not, then we'll probably go forward with the appeal process.
I understand. Thanks.
So on item nine, the code amendments. I've consolidated a few things. We've had housekeeping amendments in the past. We've had other types of amendments. I've tried to group them all in here under code amendments, unless they're related specifically to the downtown or some other particular item. So there are a few new items under here. A and B are the two that are grant funded. Those will be done by consultants with management by our staff. So there's still quite a few hours in that, because we have a certain match that we have to provide, and there may be some additional work that staff has to do as part of that. But we're hoping that the consultant will do the bulk of the work on that. B is actually new. A is a carryover from before. B is new in that that's one of the things that was eligible for grant funding, and it is in the housing strategy. So that was one that staff proposed, applied for and was successful in getting the funding for. That will also be a question for the council about whether they want to proceed with that. So we would have to obviously forego the grant funding, but if they don't think that's a high priority, then we would not do that one. C is a carryover, and again, we're suggesting deferral. That just doesn't seem to be something that's a burning issue for us to try to address. Likewise, with, I'm sorry, D and E are two items that were, again, suggested by the planning commission. Both good ideas, but again, given the other priorities, we're suggesting that those be deferred.
Thank you for adding those in. Very much appreciate it.
Did I capture those correctly?
Other than having them be covered in 2020?
You can certainly suggest that they be done sooner. That's why we're here tonight. F is a list of all of the housekeeping amendments. This is something we have every year. We didn't have this list available when I put the packet together, my apologies for that. So we have compiled that. There are nine items under there. The ninth item, I just want to bring to your attention, these are some housekeeping amendments that have been identified by our public works staff. That's the other handout that I left at your chair tonight. I'm not going to go through this, because it's really just public works related. The only reason I bring it to your attention is some of these are in titles that will come before you for your approval. But they're going to do the bulk of the work on this. It's really just staff, community development staff doing the processing of it. So we've got some time in there for that, but it's not a huge burden on community development staff. So that's, I'd be happy to answer any questions I can, but I'm not familiar with everything on that list. And I'm not going to go through everything on the housekeeping amendments unless you have specific questions on those, but I would try to answer those. I think most are fairly self-explanatory. Item 10, these are the downtown sub area code amendments. So A and B are the carryovers, things that we're already working on, the downtown public space and the downtown historic resources regulations, wrapping those up in the first quarter of this year. Then other potential downtown plan and code amendments regarding city-owned parcels. So this really has to do with a couple of things. One is new, and that's Parcel A, which is the old bike and ski shop site that's city-owned. The proposal on there from Imagine Housing for Affordable Units has funding for the purchase of the property. That's already been approved. They've gotten that funding. They still have to get additional funding, which they're going to do this next year for the construction of the project. There are some things that will make the project difficult, given our current code, some of our regulations that were put in place for very good reasons, but may not be as applicable in this particular situation. So we'll probably have to do some code amendments to make that project actually work on that site, because it's a very difficult site. So that's what A is. B, I think we've talked about this in the past. We brought this to the council last year to their attention. We have a planned action EIS for the downtown, similar to what we're doing for Canyon Park, that essentially does analysis for up to a certain amount of impact, typically based on transportation trips or the amount of development, square footage of development that occurs, or residential units that occur. We're about to cross that threshold in the next year or two, depending on how much additional development we get in the downtown. That obviously has implications for our city-owned properties as well. If we don't update the EIS and increase those thresholds to accommodate that new growth under that planned action, then individual projects would have to do their own environmental review. So we want to try to keep that incentive in place for the future development, for the redevelopment of downtown, and particularly in the city-owned properties. So this would involve an update to that. And again, we're proposing deferral to '21.
That seems like a significant action, impacting development of the other city-owned properties. Any concerns there? Is it going to slow down? I mean, granted, a lot of stuff is not moving very quickly as it is, but fragmenting the environmental review to the individual projects seems like it could ultimately take more time and money than getting it done.
Yes, it could, and that's why we have this on the docket. We think we're okay with doing it in '21. And this is one that I would say, I probably wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend that we go beyond '21 for that, because I think we'll be hitting up against those thresholds no later than that. Given the timing of the sale of the properties and the amount of time it will take to do the design and the entitlements and the actual construction, I think we'd be okay doing that update in '21. So the next ones then really get into the the list of other things that we don't think we can get to this year. And I'm happy to talk about those individually. I think most of them are deferrals from previous years. The only other new ones, and I think we talked about this before, are from the private property owner initiated ones, and those are on item number 19. B and C, these are some private property requests. And again, we're recommending, as we did with A in the past, that we defer that to the periodic update, currently scheduled for '23.
I have a brief comment about that. This past year, the Planning Commission decided to show support for prioritizing the property owner request for the nursing home code amendment process. And I think that was a great success on the part of Planning Commission, hearing back from the community and responding to their requests. But I think that in this case, with these property owner requests, there's some pretty hard and fast deadlines that are approaching with Canyon Park and with the impending update to the comprehensive plan. I think that it's reasonable to defer these at this time.
Great.
Question on the school district impact fees. So as stated here, the district is requesting the city collect the fees. Does that mean by deferring this, the district is collecting the fees?
Yes, that's currently how it's handled. The district collects those fees.
So the fees are still going somewhere?
Yes. So this evening, what we're really asking for, any questions or clarifications on anything that we have in here, particularly those that you have added to make sure that we've captured those accurately and adequately? Any other additions or deletions that you would suggest, as well as any changes in the priorities that we have here? And then, of course, any other questions or comments that you might have? That's what we're seeking for you, from you this evening. There is no formal action. We're not asking for a motion or anything like that. And we'll carry all of your comments forward to the city council.
I think you captured my desire for solar potential in the city well. I wish I could somehow change part of the incentivize to require, but incentivize is great. I think it's achievable, and I'm looking forward to the city addressing it in a couple of years.
Had you suggested required? Or? My notes had incentivize.
Yeah, no, let's keep it with incentivize. Sounds good.
All righty. Any other?
The TDRs looked fine as well. I feel like with the staff issues, I mean, definitely the two items that we added are not the highest priority. I just hope that we don't kick those cans down the road perpetually and that we can one day address them, because the longer we wait, the more everything's built out, and we have no opportunity to actually use what we're, you know, suggesting. So that's my only comment.
Understood. We would love to do all of these things. The, I was saying, I think there was one other item I was going to mention. Oh, the presentation to city council will be a little bit different in terms of the staff resources, because I'm going to give them a couple of different scenarios. So as I mentioned, this one is based on filling Bruce's position after he retires. I'm going to be acting in the council to allow us to fill that position sooner rather than later. So if that's possible, that would increase the FTE up to my initial estimate, and I'm still working on this, is, I think, by about half, so maybe two and a quarter. So that gains us a little bit more in terms of the hours that we could, and pick up a few more of these items.
Would having any kind of thing initiated from Planning Commission with that request? Or could our support, or is it already known enough to, would it help at all in getting that extra staff ability? I know the Planning Commission, about five years ago, we did write a letter with regards to clustering, and there were things that we did that went to city council, and it was like an action on our end. And I probably been speaking for everybody, I'm going to speak for myself, but probably everybody here, when we see the strong need for that. And especially because you just, having somebody come on before Bruce leaves would be so big, because you just gain so much knowledge that is much tougher to get back. It just seems like a lot more efficient to try to make that happen earlier. And I know you're trying to, but would it help at all to have anything from the commission on that front? Or the drafted letter?
I don't know if I can address that directly in terms of would it help or not, but I think that's certainly within the commission's prerogative if you want to make a comment on that.
I'd support that, taking action as the commission.
Okay.
As would I. Yeah, I mean, I think we even talked about adding, in our last letter, trying to add an FTE. And budgets being tight, we get it, but bringing someone on new, it seems like it would, not only the request to bring someone on earlier, but I would say just with all the planning left to do in the city, like adding one would be another point that I'd have if I were drafting a letter.
So if we wanted to draft a letter, do we need to, can we, can we talk about that at this time?
Certainly, that's...
Okay. Is there, I guess, is there anybody here who would like to draft that letter? I mean, I guess you could send it out for us to review, or somebody could send it out for us to review before we, and then we could, or we could bring it back at a following meeting? How would you do that?
So procedurally, I think there are a couple of ways that the commission could go with that. One is you could direct the chair or someone on the commission to draft a letter. And you could bring it back. You would have time to do that on your next agenda before this goes to the council in February. So you do have one more meeting this month. That's a possibility. Or you could just defer to, you know, someone's authority if you've laid out what you want in the letter and then just basically authorize that person to draft the letter on behalf of the commission.
Okay.
Well, I think there's a significant advantage in bringing on staff to overlap before Bruce's retirement to transfer some of that institutional knowledge. The complexity of the issues at Canyon Park is significant and pretty well accepted. So having an individual there to gather that information, I think, would be very significant. I think that's kind of the hook. I mean, it'd be great to have more resources and all of that, but the city is resource-constrained. But there's a very specific issue here, that an individual with considerable knowledge and expertise on a given issue, which is a council priority, is leaving. And working to facilitate the transfer is in the city's interest.
And that will be part of my presentation to the council. In addition to the monies that we receive from the state are funding a portion of Bruce's salary. So we have some salary savings there in order to hopefully be able to do this sooner rather than later. So that was part of the plan in doing that. And I've tried to get Bruce to have a USB implanted, so I could just download everything that he knows, haven't convinced him of that yet.
Okay, great. Well, I'd be happy to write that letter, unless there was somebody else up here who would prefer to, who's like, just really wants to script it up.
Well, I have described what my thoughts and concerns are, so if you want to capture that, and certainly whatever else would be great.
Okay. And then bring that back to your next meeting because you don't want to be doing this outside of the commission meeting, so...
Yeah.
We don't want a serial meeting or anything like that going on.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and try to put something together.
Any other comments, questions, changes to the draft as it exists now? As I said, we'll be refining this. There may be a few more changes to it. I can't promise that this is exactly how it's going to end up because I keep thinking of other things all the time. Every time I look at this, I got to stop looking at it. But in terms of the priorities or anything like that?
I have a clarification question about item number two, transportation element, including amendments from the bike plan adoption. I know that that was deferred until 2020. Is that due to public works? Or I'm looking through the public works docket, and there's nothing about the bike plan. What's the...
Thank you for that question. That's a good clarification. This is a deferral of something that we had started in 2019. So they're working on the bike plan. They were not able to get it done in time to include in the 2019 amendments. So that would be done then this year, and we would incorporate it into the 2020 amendments. The items that are on here are really more just housekeeping types of things, so that it would not appear on this because it's a little different.
That makes sense. Okay, thanks.
Well, thank you, Michael.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great presentation. Thanks for...
All your input into this. It's always a challenge trying to capture everything and figure out how best to use our resources on these. So it will be, it's always a good discussion with the council as well. They understand and appreciate the limitations that we have, and I know they, you know, are faced with some tough choices when we talk about these priorities as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any old business tonight? I guess there's no old business. Staff reports?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two quick items that I have. One is the reminder of the January 10th application deadline for Board and Commission. Anyone interested in being on a Board of Commission or reapplying to be on a Board of Commission, not reapplying, being reappointed, excuse me, this Friday is the deadline for that. Council is scheduled to do interviews, I believe it's the February 11th meeting. So they would make those appointments, and then they would take effect April 1st for any new members, for any vacancies like the one we have on the Planning Commission. It would be immediate upon appointment. The other item is, speaking of Canyon Park, there is a public meeting tomorrow night at the Canyon Hills Community Church in Canyon Park from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. That will be focused on the Ninth Avenue area and the potential future connections between Canyon Park and Ninth Avenue. This is something that I know Bruce talked about when he did some of the briefings here with the Planning Commission and also with the City Council. So we're hoping that folks will come out for that and learn about what's being talked about. Nothing is proposed, nothing is firm at this point, but just get an idea of what's being talked about and why, the importance of the things that we're looking at as far as transportation connections through that area. So that, again, that's tomorrow night, Canyon Hills Community Church from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And do you have any kind of report, like on what happened in council last night? Do we have a new leadership?
So last night, the, really, the agenda was about the election of the mayor and deputy mayor. So Mayor Liam Olson is the new mayor, and Deputy Mayor is Gene Zornz. So that, those are both approved last night, and then they also went through different committee assignments. And as Councilmember Dewar mentioned this evening, they did have some brief discussion afterwards. I don't think they reached a conclusion, but they were talking about the different, the liaisons to the different boards and commissions and whether to continue that or if there's a better means of staying in touch with the work that this and other groups do.
Great. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
Member reports.
Kusur Kabe.
Just a quick note, I won't be seeking reappointment, so there'll be at least two vacancies, and definitely echo your sentiments about anyone that's interested. It's been great serving up here and definitely looking forward to some new ideas.
How many years have you been serving?
I don't know. Seven, maybe, eight, seven, yeah.
With the two commissions?
Longer than that with both of them.
Wow.
Commissioner Kurt. Your appointment runs through the end of March.
Kusur Kabe.
I was just going to comment that I'm planning on going to the Canyon Park meeting tomorrow. I don't know if we have quorum or if other people are interested in going. Just want to make sure.
I will not be attending.
Unsure at this point.
Okay, cool.
But yeah, thanks for attending and thanks for asking. I'll see. And with that, I guess we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to adjourn.
Although, hang on, there's another meeting next week on the Wayne property, Thursday at 6:00. I am planning on going to that one. I don't know if there's a quorum issue there.
I am also planning on going to that one.
Okay, so one other commissioner can attend that, so we're fine. I'm not sure if I'll be attending that or not. Will you be attending? Okay. I think we'll be okay.
Okay.
Thank you, though. Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.